Hello. Hello, everybody. Welcome. In case of an emergency, please evacuate this room. Exit gates doors located on the north side of the gym. Turn left if you see directly to the outside, or you may use the door located in the northwest corner to see directly outside of the district office. If you would like to begin with, I'll refer to Mr. Minnasa.
Thank you, Mrs. Kool. Good evening to the board and to the public. I will be discussing the school district wide safety plan. The introduction and purpose. The school's safety is the job of the entire school community. This effort requires leadership and coordination by school administration and involvement and participation from all sectors of the school community. New York State school districts are required to develop the district-wide school safety plan to help school officials identify and respond to potential emergencies. Planning, conducting drills, and participating in exercises with law enforcement, fire emergency officials, and other members of the school community ensures a comprehensive unified approach to emergency response planning. The Boling School District Safety Team, with the guidance of the New York State Police, developed the Boling Union Free School District Wide Safety Plan. The identification of teams. The Boling Union Free School District Wide Safety Plan was developed pursuant to Commissioner's Regulations 155.17, New York Education Law 2801, and Educated Section 807. School districts are required to develop and maintain a district-wide safety plan and building level safety plans. Boling Union Free School District Safety Team consists of representatives of the following groups: administrators, teachers, local law enforcement officials, local ambulance or other emergency response agencies, and other representatives. The district safety team is responsible for the overall development, maintenance, and revisions of the emergency response plan and coordinating training and exercising the emergency response plan. Team members work closely together to make recommendations for revising and enhancing the plan. Various agencies and services are involved in responding to incidents, including emergency responders from law enforcement, fire emergency, and medical services, mental health, and other community organizations. The concept of operations. The concept of the emergency response plan is to execute effective and timely decisions and actions that prevent harm, protect lives and property, mitigate damages, restore order, and aid recovery. The district safety team, various agencies and services, are involved in responding to incidents, including emergency responders from law enforcement, fire, emergency, medical services, mental health, and other community organizations. Training and exercise. The Boling Union Free School District understands the importance of training, drills, and exercise in being prepared to deal with an incident. Annual training is provided to ensure the school personnel and responders are aware of their responsibilities under the district-wide response plan. The authorities and references. The following state and federal authorizations upon which the district-wide emergency response plan is based. These authorities and references provide legal basis for emergency management, operations, and activities. The New York State Safe Schools Against Violence and Education Project SAVE, New York State Executive Order 26.1, and Homeland Security Presidential Directive. That is what I have for the safety plan. Any questions?
If anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
If we have a couple minutes before we go over to the next meeting. Or that you're ready to move on to. I think now get a motion to let your public here. Under six minutes, okay. So, good evening, everybody. We are now going to start our regular meeting. As we typically do as well as the evacuation seekers. We do not need to do that again at the moment. For the education, substance minutes for the fourth education may exist. But on August 4th, August 23rd, and August 1st, we completely want to detail who are in there. Um, only five of us. That's the five different screen over to take her part. For the education of now to receive the present. We look on the October 21st, we detail who are they now. So, we will leave. So tonight, we have a special guest. But before we introduce the special guest, I'll just set up that. I think it's well known at this point that the work involved in schools, the work for our teachers and our administrators, our aides, and our teachers. Large staff, and custodial staff, branch staff, affiliate such. We celebrate all of the great work of our students. And so, this past year, we introduced a project called Hello Neighbor. And it's a collaborative project between high school student, high school art student, and our珀西centrators. Before we get to the invitation that this the HR is going to make, I'd like to show a short video of what that project evolved out. So there are some concepts to what this show is going to share. I know that if you all stop doing the work, I dream of beautiful world we have got. My wish for the world to be a better place. So, what you saw was a collaboration between the high school and珀西. And basically, our photography students were asked to document the hopes and dreams of our second graders at the Platts School. So you can hear that our kids don't want to rule the world. They just want to make the world a fairer and nicer place. But that's an example of across grade level project. But it is, it has social emotional learning embedded in it. It has content embedded in it. It builds the relationships that the kids in our community. And it is now a part of permanent living museum that is on the fence and program tennis courts. And we hope to be able to extend it to other school and continue to build that museum. So with that, Mr. Minnasa, I know that you have something that you would like to present for.
Well, you couldn't have, you couldn't have had a better introduction. I don't have to explain what you've done to cause me to be here tonight. But I'm here tonight in my role as the area director of the New York State School Boards Association. The School Boards Association, as you well know, besides training and lobbying and other education efforts, we also like to recognize. And so, the Hello Neighbor Program has been recognized by the New York State School Boards Association as a Champions of Change Award winner. And I have for you a banner. It's a, it's a nice banner. Mrs. Kool would like to come? I could hand it off to you.
Absolutely beautiful. On behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you. This is important and it means a lot to us. It would be very proudly displayed.
Well, you know, as a third generation, hundred-year Baldwinite, I'm always proud to see my home recognized and very proud of the fact that, you know, we're teaching values, we're teaching not separately, but as part of, you know, infused in everything we do, social, emotional development, community, communications. What a great idea, you know, I've found people just like to be asked. You know, for second graders, this is a really powerful thing for the senior high students to ask them about their dreams and everything like that. It's gotta help them understand how they are valued. We know they are. But it's important that everyone knows that they are valued, that we value them. And on just a personal note, I want to thank the board for their continued support of me as a member of the Nassau OBOSIs and the Board of New York State School Boards Association. Thanks so much and have a great year.
So we'll continue. Tonight, we have the pleasure of hearing about the epidemic program in our school system. So Mr. Minnasa and his team are going to share a summary of the full year, the unprecedented school year 2021 and summer of 2021. There is a presentation, so I think with that, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Kami. Good evening, Board of Education and community members. So, good evening, Dr. Kami, Board of Education and community members. Tonight, we're going to present to you some highlights from the 2020-21 school year, at least concluding highlights, because you've heard throughout the course of the year several different highlights and awards that the school has received and district has received. Joining me this evening is Mr. Jason White, who is the high school summer school coordinator. Mr. Lock Young, who coordinated the middle school program. Ms. Melanie Hirsch, who oversaw our ESY program. And she'll also speak about our ENL program that we offered this summer. So just starting off, I'm very proud to notify the community and Board of Education that at the end of June, we had a 98% graduation rate, which is.
Which is extraordinary, particularly during the time of pandemic. If you examine our five-year average, you'll see that our work's graduation rates have been in the range of 96% to 90%. But this year, with the great work of our students, teachers, and higher staff, A12, we ended up a 98% graduation rate. Out of the students who did not graduate, there were some with special needs who are part of that cohort that was still 21 years old. So that's why 98% is remarkable because that little last 22% is students who we're proud to have in our school district, proud to be there on behalf of those special needs that just in that cohort. In addition to, we've got a high graduation rate. This year, we saw a decrease from 60% for our advanced speech and口语 rate to 70%. I put a star there because we do need to keep in mind that this advanced speech and口语 rate, which is resulting in up to seven of the advanced events that students have to pass, that students provide, there were exemptions due to the pandemic. So New York State did allow for exams to be exempted. The student passed the course, they were also able to earn credit if that course ended in the region where they earned credit in that exam. So I did put a little notation there for that purpose of our rates. The 70% is remarkable. I know that we feel very proud of that. It's all again a part of our students and our staff. Another very proud accomplishment, when you dive deep into our graduation rates, when we examine how our different subjects of students performed, you will notice that there is no gap in terms of our graduation rate. Male, female, this June, 97%, 99% graduation rate. Black, 98%, Hispanic, 99%, Asians, Islander, 96%, white, 96%, multiracial, 100%, general Asian students, 99%, students with disabilities, 85%, but that is a very big group of special needs students. Our LEB, which is our ENL students, limited English efficiency, 100% of students in that cohort graduated. Then our low socioeconomic students, many students, 97% graduated. So, I cannot say enough about the hard work of our high students. What's more impressive is that since you just tuned, we look at our five-year trend into August, because that's how the state reports the numbers. When you go to the New York State Report Card, you'll see that this has been a consistent trend in both the past five years. So extremely proud of our entire staff, A12, all the hard work that they do to get our students to graduate. College, we're ready. Another impressive trend is our advanced placement trend. But you will notice that in 2017, we had 620 exams taken. When I say exams taken, that means I could take one exam or I could take in multiple exams, two, three, or four. We have several students who take multiple exams, particularly in their sophomore, junior, or senior year. We have seen a steady climb with this number. This past administration period, we had a total of 917 exams taken. So we almost increased 300 exams taken over the course of the past five years. We are meaning to be our challenging our students. We have an open enrollment policy. Teachers are making recommendations to students taking these challenging courses. Ninety challenges are involved. The process is a very excellent facilitation process. Make sure students are taking most rigorous courses together for college, yeah. When you look at all these different achievements, the result is different types of awards. One of the awards that the school district has received is again the best high schools in U.S. News Report. This year, we jumped 60 place rankings. It's our second year in a row that we will make this achievement. And the criteria of this achievement is all stamping. So it's how students are doing in your math efficiency, your language efficiency, and they examined your graduation rate. And they examined AP enrollments. They examined AP, you know, three or better sports exam. So you're ready to dive into your data.
Can you explain what that dual enrollment is not included and what for us that would mean?
So Dr. Kami asked for, explained what the enrollment courses are and that's not included in this people data. So students can take either AP courses, the advanced placement course, and they take examination to earn college credit. These exams are by the college board for students and I would just take dual enrollment courses. Dual enrollment courses, a teacher receives certification. They apply to be like some adjunct to a local university or to a bar. So we have partnerships with Syracuse, Loyd. We have partnerships with LIU, Apollo Patients. And school teacher teach that course. They provide curriculum to teach that course for those with college level course. And then in a examination or assessment, the college responds with the teacher. The student then earns a C or better in that course. They pay for the credits they earn dual enrollment. They earn credits from that university and they take back. So again, those credits transferred to what college they apply to. Typically, they do transfer. A dual enrollment seats are not included in active issues from U.S. News to get to this point. We have a large number of students. There's a maximum of 600 seats in our dual enrollment courses. So we have a large number of students that would be either one depending upon their area of interest.
Should we go get Nassau? The kids at Nassau won't follow up.
So another proud program that we have this year is we have a partnership, new partnership with Nassau Community College. We have 13 or so of our seniors who are busy doing reverse dual enrollment program. Instead of taking courses without teachers at the high school, they're taking college level courses at Nassau. And we are marrying that course to the high school credit that they would be in the graduation. They are taking a full piece load, they were 28, 32 credits at Nassau this year. They just started, had orientation. It's a wonderful program opportunity for that student to complete their first year of college and graduating simultaneously. And as you know, they're going to get a transfer from Nassau, which is transferable to almost anywhere that they want to go from the student system. So they could, but they stay exactly around Nassau. And then transfer and it will greatly reduce their college debt that they took our people graduating into the college. And they're jumping ahead of everyone else right through credits. And Monday, they'll have more classes, juniors or sophomores, they take AP exams from home. Some of these students easily enter college on graduating with anywhere from 30 to 40 plus credits, which is just a lot. We look at whole. All right. I am now going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Jason White, who's going to highlight some of our outcomes from the high school summer school program.
All right, thank you, Mr. Minnasa. And thank you so much for allowing us to present tonight. So the goal of our program, all right, it was five students with credit recovery and advanced opportunities, health participation, government, and for economics. Basically, we gave students the opportunity to really jump on the next year by taking health classes, participation, government classes, and for economics, right? As well as allowing them to replace credit. And the structure of our program was we're a Monday through Thursday program. It started on June 6th through August 5th. It was a 20-day construction and we were full in person. So it was a transition from the previous school year where we had the A and B days. Now, our program was full in person. Each course with eight minutes of instruction per day. And we provided instruction for students grade eight to 12. And we provided instruction for major subject areas. With the addition of French, which is the first year this year, eighth graders coming ninth graders, they have to take French 1, Spanish 1, 2, and 3, health and art. They can take that for advanced. So in terms of our program outcome, we were very successful. We had a total of 277 total students in grade eight to 12 enrolled in summer school. And had a total of 429 seats, which means if one student took two classes, you'd have one student and two seats. All right, so we had 277 total students in our program and a total of 429 seats. Students were able to redeem credit and close any learning gaps that we had this pandemic year, right? We were able to not necessarily be. And we had 413 of that 429, they were able to successfully complete the course. All right, and the overall benefit of this whole program was the fact that students were able to earn credits for graduation, which helps to improve in A and stuff than what we were doing during the break of school. So it was a very successful year. And I thank you all having the insight to support the program. At this point on the test, though, it was Black Young, who was our middle school principal.
Okay, with your side, and then you, by me here. So, the suffering of the middle school summer school.
So the summary of the middle school summer school program. The middle school summer school secondary program is a little different than a high school program because there's no credit area. So we actually preparing our students that's going to set them up for the next incoming school year. So the student that we are inviting in our incoming seventh grader, which currently they're sixth, uh, currently in seventh grade now. At that time, they were sixth grade. And also the seventh grader at then and now they're coming eighth grader, so currently they're eighth grade. So we invited our numbers of incoming seventh grade, eighth grade students to our program. And we're focusing on English and math. We're fortunate enough that all our summer school teachers at the school are actually from our own boarding district, our school teachers. So they actually know their student, they know the program, they know, uh, we're completely about. The program started in July sixth to July third, yeah, so it was short in the high school, but then we ran for my fifth prime. So that's a nineteen, back in days of instruction, it's three-person, each class is nine minutes long. So we're rep and thirty, and there's a spot. And so as I mentioned, we do provide to sixth and seventh grade English and math. So in terms of English, a sixth grader, which is incoming seventh grader, they were reading the book for Cole Parker. And that book could be, could actually be used as a substitution for some reading assignment. So a student during the summer school, they were actually able to, almost like two stone, uh, one stone convert, which is studying, uh, preparing for the upcoming school year and also a summer reading assignment. Similarly, for the incoming eighth grader, which is seventh grade, they were reading their book, uh, for the book. So similarly, they were, they were preparing for the summer reading and also preparing for the school. For, in terms of that, for the seventh grade curriculum, we follow English New York very closely. And the seventh grade curriculum, we focus a lot on ratio and proportion. So that's a topic that we actually pull out, prepare students so we get different little taste and kind of stir up their curiosity. So when they actually enter into the school year in their math class, they actually have some background knowledge. They don't have school health knowledge yet, so kind of stir up their curiosity a little bit. To kind of call the teacher, oh, I talked about this, let me tell you more about it. So for seventh grade, they learn about ratio and portion. And for seventh grades, which is actually coming eighth grade, they are going to be in the algebra regions. And we specifically pull out all the functions unit of algebra concept. So that actually is the first module from English for algebra two, uh, for algebra, uh, one. So then, uh, that also prepare them for this coming school year. In terms of numbers, why we have a hundred and eighty-four students in sixth and seventh grades, similarly like what Mr. White explained. Each student have two seats. We have ninety-eight percent passing rate, which that means that, that, uh, percentage wise, it's kind of hard to tell. But what that can say too is we need, we only have two students that didn't pass a math class. And that was due to, uh, finish. I would be glad to actually say that even the two students that passed, all of the students, including those two students, they were able, they were able to actually complete all the summer reading assignment. And they were also able to compete on I S L math summer assignment. So they actually correspond when they actually enter the school year and they're ready of a few years. And that is actually the, uh, the summer time, uh, summer school program that has been on to.
So I'm going to speak on E N L program and E S Y program that we have this summer. So our E N L program has students eight through eight from all buildings by school. It was fully in-person, so none of our students were going to that hall. And all of our teachers came from the districts. Most of them either had students that they had previously taught or will be teaching. We had about seventy kids at all levels of efficiency levels. Some were very beginner and some were advanced and just proficient, becoming more proficient that they become more successful going forward. Especially those that would be entering high school, that they can take their future exam and graduate that, that all of the honors that were spoken about previously. The five E N L teachers that they sent came from all buildings. So some do it because they've had their students and they want to continue with them. And some choose to teach the program because they want to see what students are coming into their classes to prepare for the school year. We also collaborated with King's College in Contra. We had eight student teachers. We had some classes that took two classroom spaces. They could spread out into small groups and the student teachers were able to work with smaller groups of kids. So that even at our youngest level, they were with, you know, two or three students to one student teacher or the teacher. And that would allow them to really excel quicker. The program is twenty days, so it's condensed, right? So they wanted to get them as much experience and exposure that they needed. And the emphasis of the program is always on literacy and language acquisition, reading skills, vocabulary, collaboration, discussion, small group reading in the class and writing. So much of their curriculum and work, you, as you probably walked through the sixth grade and second floor, right? It was all posted all over the hallways, was the chart paper with all sorts of storylines and pictures and diagrams and tons of work that the students had produced throughout the summer. And our E S Y program, again, has the middle school downstairs. We have a program that's, the goal is to prevent progression of our students and increase their success, not only during the summer, but throughout the school year in all of their coursework. So we focus on math and reading proficiency while celebrating social and cultural identities in team weeks and activities to promote all sorts of things that students enjoy. We try to bring in as much excitement to them and relevancy to the students that they, and then see the excitement of the academics that were, you know, helping them to complete. So we had science and activities. And then the, our littlest ones in the middle were deciding to be their different superheroes and reading all sorts of stories that, that ended in a pretend learning as our youngest learners. Twenty of them under six, seven years old, so trying to get them a little excited. And this summer program for them, we had about seven or eight students that were fully remote all year. And their first day of school was the E S Y program, so back into the building, which allowed them to transition better into this school year. All in-person, uh, all in-person classes were fully attended and fully staffed by our teachers, our teacher and the teaching assistants that were there to help students get them back into the building and continue to full instruction like we have right now. And they were all encouraged to use all different spaces, the library, the gym, the cafeterias. We had laptop carts and Chromebooks. We had used the smartboards, the F board and all that to encourage technology as well as outdoor learning. I asked all teachers to take students outside of E N L and E S Y programs at least once a day, but for the math breaks. But as well, they were able to use the gardens over at Meadow to continue all their exciting science, science teachers. So I go with that. And as well as getting them out of the building and around as much as possible because inside the classrooms gets a little stuffy in the summer, although the air conditioning was great, for example. But it was nice to get them out and learning in the community environment as well.
I just want to stress two things. One, our middle school program, a lot of middle school programs, some programs are purely based on remediation. Ours was not at all. I heard Young talk about excelling, learning, preparing for the future year. So with the help of Mrs. Napoli and our G L A supervisor, folks Young, created a deep program curriculum to make sure that students who struggled through the course of the year were given the proper tools and skills they needed to have a very successful fall. And so they're coming into school with their summer assignments completed. They're coming to school having the skills that are aligned with standards for like first, first, second unit in school. They have those skills ready as foundational skills. So they're ready to, you know, dive in and go deeper. So I just wanted to say that. The other thing, it's going back to the NASA program. We're the only school district along Island right now that is fully immersed with so many students attending full day at NASA. We used to have that program something, but based on student feedback, they wanted something closer. They still were engaged after switching to the high school. And due to Dr. Candy's assistance and collaboration, Dr. Williams, that's our three thousand president. We were able to collaborate with them and form partnerships with them. So thank you, Dr. Candy, for the visionary work, collaboration, and the support, all your support. So we funded this program yearly. And on a day, our summer program coordinators, Sergeant Young, Dr. White, were there working summer. And our favorite, see, Warren, while we were in some environment of our school stuff.
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. Anybody have any questions? This is cool if I have a question. And if you don't have this information, you can get back to me. I'm just curious to know, you know, seventy percent regions, advanced regions, power, right? Can you give me a estimate as to how many, that seventy percent out of class, seventy percent out of?
It's seven percent out of the whole board that graduated. So, um, and I don't know the exact number, but I believe our cohort was on one hundred and twenty-eight seniors of high school, roughly. Out of one hundred and twenty-eight, ten did not graduate. But out of that ten, you break down the how many were in that, especially these categories. Um, one of the students out of the ten did graduate in August, so we're very proud of that accomplishment. And of course.
So maybe out of the four hundred students, as we got.
Four hundred and twenty-eight, so seventy.
Set of those.
Have you those didn't graduate?
Minus the ten.
So it's, um, point eight, seven percent of that point eighteen.
That's amazing, that's amazing.
It's a true yes.
That is amazing, that's amazing. Um, and my second question was with respect to the AP courses. Again, we have an increase in that. I would like to speak to maybe some of the reasons we have an increase of that.
It would be my pleasure too. You know, one is the direct result of supervisors collaborating with the high school guidance department, teachers, making recommendations to students. We really strategically would look at how students progressing in their coursework. They were excelling, they had, you know, items like hard worker, you know, eyes of attitude, et cetera. We, even if the students didn't make requests, we have to collaborate with academic teams. Say, hey, you believe that Anthony is ready for that course and prove that college course. Another thing we did, uh, two years ago, pre-pandemic, but when New York State released the company of Global One and Global Two, which is the two-year reach exam, uh, they stopped that and needed a one-year reach exam. We were able to reinvent that first year of this class. So instead of often thinking global one, it's not easy to take it really because they, uh, information is not tested in a year. We started to have a significant number of students take AP human geography, uh, which fulfills the standards and requirements for social studies, diet, and food. So we increased our number of AP students, uh, pretty like by a hundred fifty students, hundred sixty students right there. We continually, with help of Mrs. Napoli, review our eighth grade students, see the students could be those who need to look at their Excel score. We look at their, uh, their grade, such and such, and more and more, it's not just other students who are going on track, but we're looking at students who are doing well, excelling and ready for that next challenge, right? That kind of happy themselves to try and add people. So those are a couple of reasons why we have that business.
And I can say that I appreciate that. I know that that's something that some community members have while it helps for, I want to say express this summer, about how we got students into those courses. So I, again, I appreciate the work that being done to challenge our students and get our students into those courses so that they can move on and do well in college in the future. Thank you.
Is this your last question?
Yes, um, thank you for that presentation. By the way, that question, one of the questions about AP courses. Uh, you just mentioned the AP geography. So that, if they take that course, they don't need to take another social studies one?
No, they still have to continue their social studies, uh, sequence. But they take that instead of global one, which is typical man-made course.
Okay, and then they're getting college credit for it.
Well, yes, if they take AP exam, I mean, uh, when they score on AP exam, they could receive college credit.
Understood, thank you. And then the other question was, you mentioned, um, the dual enrollment required by the difference between dual enrollment versus AP course. Is there a higher number of participation in one versus the other?
So I would have to go back to the data, take a look at, I actually remember the number of dual enrollment seats because they're usually looking at that a couple of years ago. So the total number of students, the total number of seats is greater in AP.
Okay.
Uh, as evidenced by this slide, we have nine hundred and twenty-ish seats in AP versus a full six hundred in dual enrollment. But with that, please, in terms of individual bodies, I don't know.
No, that's fine, that would answer my question. And, um, the high school summer.
By the way, we go back to the basis dual enrollment, because with our new, uh, force, senior school studies, we imagined our participation in government courses, mandatory course graduation. That course is now a, it's called, uh, used civics and used literacy. The course, as you imagine, it's really cover civics and change agents.
Okay.
And also exclusive in used literacy, that's a dual enrollment course, Stony Brook. Part of our used literacy mission, we heard about that participation during the school year where we did sixth grade, some grade, eighth grade, and high school. So that's, um, the year two of our used literacy partnership. So all our seniors are now going to be taking the dual enrollment course in their school year.
Wow, that's great.
With the ability to earn credit for some diversity, as long as they are successful in the course and they pay those credits, I believe the rate is not too much of dollars they were paying. With three credits, three pounds prices.
Cheaper than college credit, I should say.
Three pounds credits, much cheaper.
Yeah, thank you. And then other last question. The numbers that were mentioned of high schools, high school summer program and middle school, that are large parts, that high school numbers.
No, we had larger tasks to be asked you. Um, I think the number was not, not as large as we anticipated. As a high school staff, who amazing job, identifying our seniors who were at risk, going to home visits. Uh, and then my juniors, sophomores were at risk to home visits. Uh, our teachers created authentic assessments to really age students with an opportunity not to deliver this regions which we serve students in. They much rather prefer these authentic assessments, which are, are relevant, they're real. Look at the questions, you know, they were about, um, science, about the body, the system, earth, about the earth, systems. Math is about our relevant math work, geometry. So the kids kind of goes much more engaging and we're very successful on that, which helped them, uh, be successful this year.
I just wanted to add that, uh, two things. One is that, uh, the summer programs this year are different than, than, than most normal summer programs in that it wasn't as much, particularly at high school, remediation as it was preparation. So the high school, uh, summer program almost had no seats in it. It was really eight, nine, ten, eleven graders to prepare them for the year coming to help them be successful this current school year. And the other thing I just want to point out is that if you remember a few years ago, we talked about a vision of all, two things. One, all of our students having access to college level courses. And the hope that all of our kids would partake in at least one college level course before they graduate to high school. Because there's a lot of research around participating in college courses and being ready for college to get there. And so with the addition of the Stony Book course, we guarantee that all of our kids will participate in a college level course, even if they don't pay the two hundred and fifty dollars in credit. By the way, you can deal with the seat now. Even if they don't pay for that, they are still participating in a college level course and doing exactly the same work that the kids who are paying for this credit will do. Remembering that Stony Book is SUNY University. And so all of SUNY schools will accept that credit and cost that. And the other thing is that as you, depending upon who you are as a student, you may, you may be really good at taking standardized tests. And so doing AP course might be a really good option for you. But if you're a student who is better, better at participating and doing projects and being embedded in the work and not worried about an AP course assessment, then a dual credit course. and not worried about an end course assessment, then a dual credit course is, is, is a good option. Remembering that, that US News and World reported almost every indicator that's used, does not use dual enrollment courses as, as any part of the statistics, um, to get you on those lists. So for all of our kids that are in dual enrollment courses, those numbers don't count. We have hundreds and hundreds of kids in those courses. And even our kids, for example, that are full-time at Nassau Community College, both times at a college course on a college campus will not count for any of those statistics. Because they only count things that end in some kind of a standardized success. So it's just, you know, it's, that's not something you can put on a summary that's all. But I think it's important that you know it and our community knows that the opportunity our kids have, access our kids have is unprecedented. Um, and it's not always measured and valued the way it should be measured and valued.
I just realized to support something else. The summer programs that are offered, you know, the, you have summer, um, assignments, the math, the high excel. In general, are they still responsible for that in addition to the fact that they're in the summer program?
Yes, that's why, um, it was beyond the teachers and banding summer assignment into the program. So they completed their program, they completed their summer assignment. So the books that we selected, we added them to the summer assignment choice book list. So they accomplish both.
So they're, it's happening at the same time. I was wondering, are they, well, are they doing?
Nope.
Okay.
Yep. So they use that opportunity to make sure they're prepared and not prescribe seminars to take place. They read that all that they, you know, um, read those standards and skills that they need to know to be successful, come through one. And then in terms of math, I excel assignment, it's always a bonus point. If you complete X, Y, Z, you get ten up to ten additional points on your first assessment, better student assessment. So, um, that was, I think, that magnetic block of time as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, okay. This is really just more of an comment than asking one question. Over the many years that I've been on board, for a long time, we were really pretty content with the numbers of students who passed regents. But we found, we were very frustrated for many years about our inability to bump the numbers of students getting advanced regents on us. And we knew it would really take a whole quarter fest in order to do that. It would take getting parents on board with having the children taking more challenging classes. And it would take, I made reference to it, and I just want to reinforce it. It really took guidance officers getting on board and it, and really encouraging students to stretch themselves and opening up classes that would really appeal to them so that we got that number up. And I'm enormously impressed. It's, it, it really is a wonderful example of the whole faculty and guidance office and administration work that, that fits really to bump up their, their. And whatever. So I absolutely am very impressed. And the other thing I just wanted to comment on, uh, it was remarked on a couple of occasions that we have confused our own staff, we have rolled over some teachers that, uh, some of the programs. And I, I would just say in light of what we've all gone through, the whole idea of being with adults that who are familiar, it's, you know, who they will know, is a big contributing factor, I believe, to their success going forward. Their sense of security, uh, and of course, it gives teachers and the adults in the buildings an opportunity to really sense what these, these need going forward. So I'm, both of those things stuck me as, as well as, as one. Something else occurred to me, and as Mrs. O'Hagan was speaking about, um, full core prep that happened with respect to getting our students involved in higher, uh, courses and, and doing what was necessary um, to bump that advanced regents, uh, problem out of. One of the things, as everyone knows, that has reminded me to be a math teacher at our local school. And math is very important to me. And one of the things that was charged, we charged the superintendent and her administration of us to work on that piece with the math, because we knew that it was a situation that we wanted to improve it. And I wanted to stop this then. Um, I know that that was one of the reasons that also that they look at the US support as well. So I wanted to then, everyone who has done the work to get that number up so that our students' achievement can be recognized. I mean, we have very bright students and sometimes it just takes focus, it takes attention to it. And I appreciate, as a math teacher, um, the focus that was given to this particular item so that we are shining the way we shine. So thank you.
I just want to say to the math teacher, it was an A twelve district. We changed math grade on that official level and at the postal level to match the ice level, really created a piece of participation recognition map. Um, and I'll keep it, like, a lot of the training and, uh, I thought it was slow, too slow, but I'm trying to correct it. But we went through a lot of training, did a lot of training, so it really goes B twelve effort to, uh, to reach out. We'll make sure that we're gonna, in, reach number one, and I know we are reaching one of that, that.
Yes.
For this, that's.
That's very tough. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you.
And I, I will add, uh, and this is not statistical information, it's very much, um, qualitative. But, um, when I first got here, and, and this is true in another district I was in, but when I first got here, I was at, um, an elementary school. And I asked the kids, you know, they were, you know, about to do math, and I said, oh, how many, you love math? And it was crickets in the room. And one student said, and this was a kid at Hindabard, said, I'm not good at math. And that worked me at math. Because how a Hindabarder would think that they're not good in math when they haven't even really attempted math really speaks to a mindset around something that is really hard to break, but that's what we believe. So more recently, pre-pandemic, so I can't even imagine what it is now, come back in the elementary schools and they were transitioning from one area and they were getting to do math. And it's a, you know, same like level of, who loves math? And they all raised their hand. And it is such a cultural difference around the topic of math. You know, you can't measure that, but it was just so heartwarming. And it really confirms, you know, the work that our elementary teachers, we're all, you know, pointing to. You know, it speaks to the work, you know, of, of our teachers. I would be remiss if I did not thank Mr. Matala and Mr. Young, Mr. Denali, Mr. White, because it is as well, um, the leadership in the district that really, um, spearheads that. And so, um, I'm, I'm really, I'm obviously proud of all of them.
Any other questions? I would also, again, just like to say, thank you so very much. Uh, all of your hard work, we truly appreciate it. And you will finish your report now.
So just, uh, two other things, and I believe Mrs. School also has something that she wants to report on. I just want to say, today was the first day of school. You know, my mother believed that rain was, was love, and so we'll go with that. But it was a smooth, oh, thank you, everybody. It was a smooth opening. Oh, this is first, I didn't thank you. Thank you, Walter. You are hiding. Um, it was a smooth opening. Um, you know, there's always a few bumps, but, you know, that's the expected. Given that we had, um, partial, uh, in-person the last year and a half. Um, it was really, uh, just an incredible day, a lot of smiles, faces, very few crying, uh, which is wonderful. Um, I also want to share that, um, in record time, we have managed to approve and, um, support a UK program. Um, I want to thank Mrs. Steph Robinson for that, because he was, um, charged with getting that done. And included in that, um, was our building, our facility staff that, um, completely refurbished what once was part of a, um, facilities area. Um, we did the entire space, they kept a room for pre-K students. For the purpose of the board and the public, um, it, the, the space has to be approved by Office of Child and Family Services. Um, they had an appointment to be in the district yesterday, um, they never showed up. Um, they apologized for that. Um, but until they approve the space, we can't allow kids in the program. So it was supposed to start today, um, it has been delayed. Um, but we hope that the program will open, um, when we come back to school next Thursday. So we will, uh, keep you updated on that. And I believe Mrs. School.
Yes, I would just like to share some information with everybody. Board would like to offer some clarification to information recently published in the Volker Herald. In the most recent edition, there's some commentary on changes that have been made related to public access and opportunity for public comment at our board meetings. There have not been any changes to curtail the opportunity for the public to comment during our meetings. Our public meetings allow the public to be present as well as provide a time for public comment during meeting. In addition, board has taken the extra step of streaming our meetings so that members of the community that are unable to attend can watch the meeting remotely. Further, the board provides a link on the homepage of our website so that those community members that are unable to attend may also submit a question to the board, which will be read aloud at the meeting and answered accordingly. We take this opportunity to ensure the community is well-informed and correctly informed and to avoid any confusion related to our board meetings. Thank you. We will now move on to the comments and reports from the Board of Education. And if it's okay with everybody, I have something, um, I would just quickly like to start with. As we begin our new school year, I would like to just take a moment to thank Mrs. O'Hagan, who served as our school board president last year. Not, and I want to thank her not only for her service to our district, but for being such an advocate for our kids for many, many years on a county and state level as well. Her dedication to our students is so inspirational, and we really are so lucky to have her. And that's all I have. Is this your last thing? Anything?
All right, welcome back to, uh, all the students, which is new staff that we're watching. But it's an exciting day to see all the faces on social media and in person. And even those that we haven't seen for almost two years, ten years. But it was a great day. It felt like a reunion, a founding reunion, so that's all I have to say.
I just wanted to say that we also saw a lot of new faces. We attended the, uh, new staff orientation at both the, the teachers and teaching, teachers aides of our employees that are in the district, and it was wonderful. And also, uh, having welcomed back, uh, veteran staff, that was really fun as well. It's always entertaining, and it was no different this year. But, uh, I also wanted to say we, we all attended, uh, we spoke, you know, so it's an educational organization every year. And the speaker this year was, uh, Long Island Region, Richard Tillis. And one thing I would like to say that, uh, apparently he has been listening to our superintendent, uh, Steve, was, uh, speaking about many of the things that are here in our life, the fact that, uh, the regions are at least talking about new ways of assessing students and new ways of approaching education. So some of, some of our efforts, all of our efforts have paid off. Sweet. I will jump on the back, let's stand back, we'll all come back, to a hopefully a very successful school year. Um, as Dr. Kami has said to us, brother of my own ability. And I look forward to that. I will say on a personal note, my daughter started on her second year of high school today. And last year, she was really looking forward to high school experience. And that was kind of, you know, postponed a year. And so when she came home today, she was very excited about the start of the year, seeing her friends and friends. Um, she was a little startled about the number of people because she kind of did the hybrid model. So she was in school when there were fewer bodies. So that was something that was kind of, um, like, whoa. But she had a really good first day, and I look forward to hopefully her having a really good year. And like I said, maybe supplanting that missed opportunity of last year and having this year. So good luck, everyone. Thank you. Mrs. Smith, you have anything? So now we're going to move on to the comment and question period of our meeting. And I again have something that I would like to leave and share with the board. Persons wishing to address the board must fill out a comment card, including the name of the speaker, the address, email address, name of organization represented, the venue, and a brief description of the topic to be addressed. The card must be placed in the comment box at the entrance prior to the question comment portion of the board meeting. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. All of people are eligible to address the Board of Education in accordance with the rules established herein. All residents of the school district, including students enrolled in school districts, uh, schools, in our schools. Any individual who owns a business located within the school district. Any person who has business involvement with the Board of Education, including employees of the school district. And any other person, if authorized by a majority vote of the Board of Education. The board will not permit, will not permit public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. All speakers will have three minutes and are to conduct themselves in a simple manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. With that, do we have any questions or comments from any of these here? Nothing yet for our audience?
Um, so while we're waiting, um, just there was, um, a, a topic of three questions that were submitted, uh, online. And the question is about the calendar and why the calendar does not include, um, holidays. Uh, so what I can share is, this is my eighth year. The decision to exclude, um, all holidays from the calendar was way made, way before, um, I arrived in Baldwin, which means that it's in excess of, uh, it's in excess of ten years. So I know Mrs. O'Hagan was on the board when that decision was made. Um, I want to, uh, address specifically, um, some of the comments that were made in, uh, emails that were sent. Because the holidays are not on the calendar, it's not mean those holidays are not, um, celebrated and learned in school. So for example, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, uh, Columbus Day, all of those federal holidays are discussed and, and, and learned about in school. Um, and for one of the reasons, um, you know, the calendar is a school calendar and, um, we need to make sure that there is room for all of the events. There are many times when there are so many events. There are many times when there are so many events in a given day that there isn't even room in the small location on the calendar. So, do you want to add anything?
I only want to add that at the time that change was made and the decision was made, there was input considerably put from the community, including a lot of the religious, the churches and synagogues and other religious groups. And the sense was that with the increasing diversity of all of Long Island and the addition of holidays that were less traditional, that had not been on the calendar before, but were being added and were to accommodate the needs and religious beliefs of newcomers, that it, it would be, would be fair to simply leave those days off so that it would not highlight or disenfranchise or in any way spotlight particular groups of people. And that has been in place for many, many years and without really any disrespect from the community. And I would say at the time, we, we also had a conversation, there was a policy around any student that observed a particular religious holiday that they identified their teacher, the teacher is responsible to provide a lesson for any time that student might miss observing that particular religious holiday. So this is something that's been in place for a very long time, and it was done with the intention of making it fair and equal to the calendar as complete by just simply making those days off as opposed to.
Thank you very much, Mrs. O'Hagan. And I think Dr. Kami, that's another question.
So there's a question from Trish Wilder. Her question is regarding preschool program. Do we look at the curriculum pre-k as teaching? So because the program is a UK program funded through the state, which means that it's filtered through the school district, we have supervisory responsibility over the curriculum. We have a person designated in the school district who will make regular visits to Just Kids, particularly the kids, remember Just Kids has two programs. So this program, this latest program, there will be interaction between the school district and the people who are teaching the kids in this preschool program to make sure that the curriculum is aligned.
And if there's nothing else, we will move on to the personal action report. Board of Education approves personal actions report as attended and dated September 1st, 2021, as detailed in the Friday mail. So moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mr. Smith. As this, as this personnel, there are no questions for discussion. All in favor? Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-SCSC, 504 Committee, and Committee on Preschool Special Education for July 2021 and August 2021, as detailed in the Friday mail. So moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All in favor? Aye. So Board of Education approves the inter-district sharing agreement between Sanitary District Number Two and Baldwin School District for the dispensing of fuel at no change in rate from last year, as detailed in the Friday mail. So moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. I am going to recuse myself from this vote as my husband is one of the commissioners of sanitation. All in favor? Aye. So moved. As Board President, I'm calling for consideration of a consent agenda for business items two through six. Are there any items members prepared to draw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion in a separate vote? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including business items two through six? Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, seconded by Mrs. Dresda. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve business items two through six? So moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education approves the updated use of facilities report for September 2021 through June 2022, as detailed in the Friday mail. So moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All in favor? Aye. Are there any questions? Want to add anything?
I don't know. Do you think the statement is that true? I mean, we talked about it before, that facilities can decide to make sure that the facility are safe for our students. That this part, we are. So there were, there was discussion around community use of our buildings. What was agreed upon was the outside facilities, so PAL, for example, Baltimore Sports Program. We are allowing the use of our outdoor facilities to outside groups, but at the current time, we are not opening up any of our indoor facilities to anyone. The policy that we had in place last school year remains. Mrs. Reed referred to, you know, flexibility, so we're following this here, flexibility. In my meetings with community groups, what we, what we've shared and there is agreement is that as we watch the numbers and we watch the, the rate of transmission and community spread of COVID, if we see that there is a downturn and we're in a good place, then we will certainly reexamine the ability to use inside facilities. But as of right now, we are allowing outside groups to use outside facilities only.
Board of Education approves the district-wide safety plan as detailed in the Friday mail. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mr. Smith. Are there any questions on this? All those in favor? Aye. So moved. Board of Education has a first read of the following policies. Policy 1530, smoking, vaping, and other tobacco use on school premises, and policy 4526.1, 4526E1, internet safety. Board of Education has a second read and adopts the following policy. Policy 0100, equal opportunity and non-discrimination. So moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dresda. All those in favor? Aye. So moved. Okay. So is there, does anybody have anything as far as other before I announce the important things? No? Okay. So Monday, September 6th through Wednesday, September 8th, our, our schools will be closed. The Baldwin Foundation for Education Annual Alumni Beach Party, which promises to be great fun, will be held Saturday, September 11th, Jones Beach Field 10, 11:00 AM. On Thursday, September 16th, our school district is closed as well. And on Saturday, September 18th, at the high school at 2:00 PM, we will have our homecoming game, and we will be playing Leno. We hope to see you all there, and thank you very much for joining us tonight, our first meeting of our new school year of flexibility and hopefully a, a smooth year. Thank you very much. And I get a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Dresda. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.